Don't even bring it up, man. My ulcer's gonna cave.
Recording in progress.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the call of the meeting. The word. This is, uh, county, city council. My name is Senator 8425. The call, please.
Darren Miller?
Here.
Eric Serine?
Here.
Jen Masaius?
Here.
Doug Amet?
Here.
Dave Anderson?
Here.
Don Benson?
Here.
Jared Tremble?
Here.
All present?
Very good. Next is the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this item is a people of minutes from the council of November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Make a motion to approve next.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Jen. I just have one edit that I would like to make. I, we, I questioned a part of a statement that was made by Jewel Pickard, and I talked to her briefly right before the meeting to confirm. We both agreed that it wasn't something that she actually said, so it was just written down. I think it was trying to summarize in a way that didn't quite say what she said. So if we could strike, it's, um, it's in the second, when we open the floor, uh, on the policy for assisting federal law enforcement, it would be the second sentence there where, uh, she continued arbitrarily saying that sentence. If we could just strike that whole sentence, I think we have to listen to the recording again. Let's just strike it and it doesn't change what the content of the rest of it, so that's the way to go. So with that edit, uh, I don't know if we just need to amend the motion to that edit.
With, uh, the edits, as you're describing.
Second.
Oh, I have to, we have a second. Second. Okay. Uh, any other comments, questions, or discussion on the minutes? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next is the approval of monthly expenditures. There's a motion on that.
The motion will be approved.
Second.
Motion by Darren, second by Jared to approve the monthly expenditures. Roll call, both please.
Jared Tremble?
Yes.
Don Benson?
Yes.
Dave Anderson?
Yes.
Doug Amet?
Yes.
Jen Masaius?
Yes.
Eric Serine?
Yes.
Darren Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, next item is public comments. Is anyone here tonight who wishes to give a public comment? If so, please, maybe step towards the microphone. For those of you who don't know the bill, write down your name and address, and then, uh, make sure that you speak right into the microphone and that goes to everyone here as well. Have your IC room has their microphones moved closer. Thank you. Is that good?
Yes, thank you.
All right, um, talking about the next agenda item, which is the, uh, federal law enforcement. And, um, I think this first left is a wonderful start. Um, I have a couple of comments. First, it's limited to ICE. And, um, Customs and Border Patrol has been doing some of the immigration code enforcement, and we are within two hundred miles of a port of entry, the port of Duluth, so they do have jurisdiction, extra jurisdiction here. And, uh, I think it should be broadened to include at least CBP, if not all federal law enforcement. Item seven, um, is pretty vague. I think you can probably drive a battleship for the exceptions, or at least a snowplow. And, um, I, I think it just needs a lot of clarification. Who's, what officer safety? Is it Washburn police officers or city employees? Is it federal people that we're trying to protect? Do we need to try to protect federal people? And, um, who's, who would the police be escorting? And then another issue that is not, uh, two other issues that aren't addressed is one about, nothing about masked agents or people without insignia and who are they really? And the other is, um, what will, uh, WPD officers do if they witness unconstitutional behavior by people claiming to be federal agents? They may be masked, they may be in uniform, who knows? If WPD legally cannot interfere, and I understand that may be true, what can our officers do to document events? And will they, um, if they do document events that appear to be unconstitutional, will they assist if somebody's bringing charges against the federal offenders? And will they testify? Um, and their role is defending the Constitution.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else here for a public comment?
Jewel Pickard, Seventeenth East Third Street. I just wanted to reference number four on, uh, what Max had written up, uh, maintainers of warrants. And according to the delegation of Immigration Authorities Section 287G Immigration and Nationality Act, ICE can still, um, or ICE has the ability to, uh, coordinate with law enforcement agency and local departments, local and state departments. And I understand that with this, uh, particular policy resolution, whatever you're, you're calling it, that would not be the case except as so stipulated with helping keep the peace, that sort of thing. But I think when it comes to if ICE has warrants or need somebody detained, if they know somebody, uh, has illegal, you know, um, has committed a crime, illegal, if they're illegal in any way, I would think that we should be able to help those people. It's not unprecedented for federal law enforcement to partner with local and state law enforcement officials. FBI does that, as well as some other agencies. I mean, it's not unprecedented. And I think that if you're spending taxpayer dollars to make sure that crime is low, which I would hope most people would agree with, if one agency isn't doing, if they see something that is illegal and they can't do anything about it, and then they, and it's, another agency has to go and go through all these extra steps in order to take care of it. It would seem that you're cutting it off at the pass, so to speak, if you take care of it right away. And I would think that our local law enforcement would be able to help with warrants and detainers, too. And I don't think ICE is the bad guy here. I know some people might consider that, but I don't think they're the bad guy masked or not. I mean, they do need protection as well. They've been doxxed and so forth by a lot of other people. So crimes should not be committed against them either. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for a public comment? Anyone online for public comment?
Just something in before I forget to do so.
No worries.
Hi, my name is Grace Colvin. I reside here in the city of Washburn at one eighteen and a half West Bayview Street. I would like to thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to speak on the proposed policy regarding, um, city interactions with federal law enforcement and ICE. In that policy, it is restrictive, like, the language that's there is restrictive to specifically immigration and customs enforcement. I would like to echo concern raised earlier regarding the scope of that policy. Federal officials have utilized other agencies outside of ICE to assist in federal immigration enforcement. That includes agencies within the Department of Homeland Security and, in some cases, outside of DHS. So that is a concern of mine as the policy is currently written, but it is so restricted to that particular agency. There is a lot to like about this policy. I would like to state that. I think it's a good start. Kind of moves things in the right direction. The language around not cooperating under provisions of the 287. That's really good language there. And in general, it moves things in the right direction. But I did want to raise that concern. The other concern that I would like to raise is the language that's there about when Washburn Police would be present during immigration enforcement operations. It's a little vague. And there are some concerns of, you know, if Washburn Local Police is at one of these operations or is at an arrest, is there a perception that they are part of that enforcement activity rather than, as the policy states, you know, it's to provide, you know, for protection of the peace, safety of officers? Um, there isn't really much there as far as what, what grounds there would need to be to constitute a safety risk for ICE. And so that really, it opens up the door for some, because negative perceptions about our local law enforcement. Are they actually participating in that enforcement operation or activity? And that, I would argue, it can erode trust with our community and our police department, seeing that, you know, the appearance, people often won't know, just seeing, oh, they're not actually part of the operation. People seeing that they are present, many people will presume they are part of the operation. And that could decrease the likelihood that people would be willing to report crimes to Washburn Police, particularly those who have an undocumented immigration status. And allowing crimes to go unreported is harmful for our community. I'm not stating that that is, or alleging that's the goal of this policy, but it is a concern that I have, um, that perception that people could have based on just the presence of our police department here in Washburn at an operation. And that, those are the concerns that I wanted to express. Again, I think this policy, there's a lot to like here. It's a really good start, but I do think that some language needs to be tightened up. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you so much. Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, uh, my name is, uh, Albert Snicker, and I live in the town of Washburn. Um, I did email you guys, uh, about a couple of weeks ago, a proposed resolution, um, and, uh, my thoughts on, um, the cooperation of, um, Washburn Police with the federal law enforcement. And to, um, echo, uh, Marjorie and, uh, Grace's sentiments, um, I do believe that the proposed policy should be extended to any federal immigration enforcement, not just ICE. Would include also the Customs and Border Patrol and any other, um, Department of Homeland Security agency as well. And, um, I believe there should also be, um, something about, uh, school records, uh, and enrollment, particularly, um, not requiring, uh, the Washburn Public Schools to require a student or parent to provide information regarding their immigration or citizenship status to establish the student's residency in the district for enrollment purposes. If it is known, it should not be kept or distributed, and it should have no bearing on the student's ability to register for school or the school's treatment of that student. I believe this is a credible issue, um, for, you know, anyone who lives here, um, especially the, um, young students, uh, who reside in this area.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here for public comment? Did I hear someone online wanting to join in?
There's so many unmuted, just did not say anything.
Uh-oh, sorry. Just here listening in.
Okay, very good.
I must have unmuted.
All right. Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Which is three oral announcements, proclamations, and appointments. The only announcement that I really have is that I had, um, a quick conversation, uh, with the emergency management coordinator for the county this morning on, uh, kind of the process for that innovation planning grant that's occurring. So they're making, uh, good progress on that, and they're hoping to have a draft, uh, report done later this month. I think they're actually having a meeting tonight with the directors potentially, um, working on that. So that's moving along. The other grant is also moving along. I believe they got a pretty good response on the survey that went out. And so, um, those are both progressing. I had something else, but I left my other packet at home with my notes, so we're gonna skip that. Don't have any proclamations, but we do have appointments in this packet, which is, I believe, under tab one.
Tab two.
Tab two. Oh, you're right. We did have another, uh, an email, uh, for under public comment, um, that we had received that was not included past time. So we put that in the packet this time. With some additional comments in there. So that was tab one. So tab two is the appointment of the election board. Okay. And so, um, Tammy DeMars, our treasurer and deputy clerk, uh, had made this recommendation to, uh, the appointments for the election board for a two-year term. And so I would in turn recommend that to council if anyone would care to make a motion on that.
We'll make a motion to appoint the election board.
As listed?
As listed.
Great.
Second.
Motion by Jared, second by Don. I would just like to, uh, take the, this opportunity to thank everyone, um, for being on there. I really appreciate all, all the time that it takes, uh, to put together an election and all the extra stress over the past number of years that has gone along with that, making sure that everybody is doing everything exactly properly, so that we can all be sure that our elections are safe and fair. So thank you very much for that. If there are any other comment, if there aren't any other comments, I would look for a vote on the motion to approve the appointments. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to pause this for a minute. Here.
Eric's still on pause. I'm sorry, I'm muted.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Uh, any opposed? If you've done, that motion passes. Thank you very much. And then the next item is discussion of the action on city policy for assisting federal law enforcement, which is tab three of your packet. So, uh, we have a draft policy that is trying to re- what, uh, reality is. Our chief did take a look at this and gave a little feedback. So I think you have made an update already before we shared the draft, um, on that. And so now, um, we're hearing, uh, public input, which is great. And we're going to, uh, I guess we would need to take, uh, make, make a motion before we have discussion on the policy that's before you. So would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the draft.
To accept that.
Uh, okay, the motion was to approve the draft for discussion?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
So we can, so we can discuss it.
Yeah, got it.
I'll second that.
And then second by Jared. Thank you very much. Okay. So we have some input next. Do you want to give any initial background or thoughts based on what you've heard already from the public?
I'm happy to answer questions. So this draft is, was prepared and presented to, I guess, uh, implement the current policy of Washburn PD. I can address some, a lot of things that we hear are, um, maybe more policy-based than legal-based, and I don't necessarily need to give an opinion on those issues, uh, giving a legal opinion here on these. I can address some of the comments that are made in, uh, public comment and give you my opinion on those from a legal standpoint here. Uh, so there are several questions that this, there are comments that this also include, this also include, uh, Customs and Border Patrol and Homeland Security. Uh, I believe that, so Customs and Border Control and Homeland Security have a much broader scope of their duties than ICE does. There are several items where Customs and Border Patrol and Homeland Security that I believe many citizens want Washburn PD to assist in, and Washburn PD also wants to assist in. So I think that the paragraph three here in this proposed policy specifically says that the city's law enforcement, its role in immigration enforcement is that it's not taking a position. That is, that is not specific to ICE taking action or CBP, CBP, or Homeland Security. It's just Washburn Police Department is not taking a role in any immigration enforcement, regardless of that, uh, who's undertaking that. The other items that are specific to ICE, uh, paragraph four, paragraph five, paragraph seven, are more specific to those functions that ICE would do. Again, then paragraph six is more broad about city police officers not taking any position, any inquiries into immigration status of individuals, uh, for the purpose of solely of taking that, that immigration information. So that's why this was drafted specifically on these, these paragraphs four and five, uh, to be, to be specific towards ICE, because those are the items in the, I guess, the agency that Washburn PD doesn't engage with. Rather than being broad and saying we're not going to engage or work with any federal agency.
So I, I understand where you're coming from. So I think where it gets a little confusing is under the purpose. Is that the purpose relates to actions undertaken by the United States Immigration, Customs, and Enforcement Agency? And so maybe if we, so that makes it sound like if it's other, other agencies are doing immigration, you know what I mean? So that just seems, that's where it seems limited. So maybe if the purpose is just more about immigration and not related to.
Related to actions concerning individuals' immigration status.
Right, versus the, like.
That makes sense.
You see, so that, so that it kind of like, well, make, take care of that limited scope.
Yep.
Under the purpose.
So just actions relating to.
Right. Because then, like you said, like, the paragraphs with ICE makes sense, but then the other paragraphs could relate to other agencies. Where if you just read the purpose, you feel like it's just rights. I think that's a really good clarification.
There's a question. On item seven, related to, there's a question on, uh, participate when assistance services ensure officer safety. The question of whose safety? This position is anyone's safety. If safety is a question, Washburn PD will step in, ensure the safety of those people. That's current practice, that's the way this is drafted. That can be up for his question, but that's what this is drafted as. Here, there were comments about nothing about masked agents. I don't know necessarily what to put into that, uh, except the police here that, I think paragraph four, uh, the, the officers won't act on any detainers or administrative warrants or warrant of searches. So officers won't act here or engage in any actions unless there's a valid judicial warrant and have to do something, or unless if someone's safety is at risk. That's the way this is written. I don't know what else to, to put in there. We can discuss that if needed. Question on what go, what Washburn Police Department officers do to document events, uh, when there may be some other violation of the law. Washburn Police Department and officers make incident reports many times that they witness any potential violation of law or city ordinances. If it ultimately comes to, if there's a question of will they assist in or testify? If there's a violation of law that is prosecuted, the Washburn Police Department officers will be subpoenaed and they'll comply with their legal lawful duty to assist or testify regarding that. I don't know if there are other things that we need to put in there. Those can be discussed. There are comments about, uh, there's a, a comment on including information about Washburn schools and student information. City of Washburn Council and Washburn Police Department have absolutely no authority or jurisdiction over what the Washburn Public School does. That shouldn't be a part of the city's policy here, because we have no role in that. It's my legal opinion. Clarifications, I'm happy to answer your questions or clarify any other things. But those are the main things that stuck out from public comment to clarify.
So we can, just to clarify for the public, this is a policy for the city of Washburn Police Department. And as far as, uh, making some sort of requirement for unmasked agents would require the ordinance with the city, if that's even legally possible to do so, outside of the policy of, of the Washburn PD.
Just to piggyback on that, is there any current policy or statute or law about uh, being identified, being identifiable as an infiltrator?
I am unsure on that. I know that it is a felony to impersonate a law enforcement officer if they are not actually one. That is a, a pretty severe felony. I don't know the current, or if there are, they want to positively identify oneself as a law enforcement officer. But I don't know what the potential remedy or requested relief would be there about someone relating to masked individuals. It's a felony for someone impersonating, uh, either local or federal law enforcement officer. That's, that I am certain of. Washburn doesn't need an ordinance to say that, so.
Is that anything that you happen to know, Nick? If you're, um.
I can answer, but, well, yeah.
Officers who happens to be here, they do, they're helping out with that question.
Okay. So in regards to your specific question about masks, we have no policy procedure. To my knowledge, there is no law against it. I will tell you this based off past conduct that our department has done. We, there has been times we have used masks ourselves. And some of that is due to drug cases where you don't want people in the cell seeing you because you're involved in undercover drug operations or buys, things like that, so. So in regards to what you're saying, no, there is no requirements on that. I would just caution you on where you go with that, just because that can affect other things you may not want to offend. And that would be it.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll just hang on in case.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Go ahead. Oh, I thought you had.
Sure, yeah. I just, I have a.
Sure, yeah. I just, I have a comment that, you know, we, we heard from the public about the CBP and DHS, but I don't want to overlook DOJ and US Marshals. Because I think, you know, this policy is written well, because we will work with US Marshals. It's rare that it happens, but, but on the occasion, it's appropriate to work with that federal agency, which is not under DHS.
So it still is going to limit our involvement for immigration.
Right, yeah, which Marshals typically aren't part of, involved for sure.
Anyone else on council, Tom?
I've just got a quick suggestion to that purpose, item number one here. It seems like that's kind of where we're running into hurdles. I think if we were to add the words immigration enforcement before the word actions undertaken by, and then we could add whatever federal agencies we want, and this would pertain to immigration enforcement actions only. I think that's really where we need to be careful.
I think, is that kind of what you were saying, John?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so that last sentence
Yep.
Would say relating to actions.
Immigration enforcement actions undertaken by any federal agency.
That seems like it would cover just about all of the bases.
Yeah, so making it very specific to immigration enforcement actions, but by any, anyone, basically, okay.
And then for item number seven, it seems like there's still a lot of vague language there. And I, just in my mind, I picture a police escort being a cop car and leading whatever's happening, right? If you wanted to have a parade and be a police escort, and I'm sure there's a permit to fill out to do that, maybe ICE should be treated the same as anybody else in this town. If they want a road shut down, we have a permitting process in place, associated fees. We could do that. But I don't think our police department should be at their disposal whenever somebody decides that they want to take immigration enforcement action. How do you feel about that?
Is, is there something that you can envision where a police escort would be requested that would be legitimate?
Um, in, in regards to immigration or federal agency, no. The only thing I think it would ever be would be potentially, kind of what you brought up, you know, are US Marshals coming here looking for an individual and they want, you know, a party unit to kind of clear traffic, to get to a location, to do an execution. And you're commenting like a parade, yes, right, oh, we don't do, we don't do those anyway. There's no permit process for it. If it's a school, we do them for the school time, and they just ask us what to do. Okay. What? No, that, that would be the only other thing I could see where it would be an escort. I mean, it does happen time to time, I mean.
And this does specify during an ICE operation?
And, and it specifically says is necessary to ensure officer's safety to prevent a breach of peace. I do think that we could, I, I would say that that last section, or last, second half of the last sentence on paragraph seven, such as request to establish traffic barriers or control traffic to provide police escort, that's unnecessary because it's just providing a non-exhaustive list, exhaustive list of options.
Right.
Maybe, if it, if that could be somehow interpreted to say that Washington Police will, without question, provide a police escort for ICE. It's not what it's intended to do, but I think striking that wouldn't have any actual impact on this policy. From the police department's operations.
The way I read that, it was more of a, you know, an escort to possibly leave the area. You know, you know, if you've got a crowd.
To get through a crowd.
Right, to get through a crowd, and Washington PD is, you know, flipping their siren on a little bit, getting people out of the way. They let ICE or whoever, I, I don't think there's a problem with that. I mean, that, that to me is, again, officer's safety between, and, and people's, it's just public safety.
So the closest thing that I can think that our department's dealt with something like that, if you remember back in 2010, maybe, remember the whole Act 10 stuff? If you were here, you maybe remember the state, state patrol deal. That would probably be the closest thing. I think that there would be an escort that, and, you know, we had representatives from the state that got surrounded in their vehicles, and we had to have it to get through, through that, so. I think that's probably the last time that's ever, wouldn't have been used, but just, just to say it from my idea, that would be something that, kind of what Darren is saying.
Jared, a question for you on that particular instance. Did anyone call your department and specifically request it in response to something happening? Or were you guys there on standby, prepared to provide an escort? Like, how, what procedure would have happened to that?
So if I remember, that was a very last minute thing. Literally phoned out about that. I think, you know, the event they knew was going on, but because of everything leading up to that, it really, I think, social media back then was kind of, and it's nude, it kind of nude back then. But it quickly, I don't think they ever intended for it to blow up like it did. At the end, once it got close, they heard that they were lost and in people protesting and stuff like that. So it was quickly put together. I mean, we had a command trailer from Douglas County here, we had lots of different agencies from state patrol. We had every, we had tons of different agencies here for that.
So it sounds like you were able to adequately respond to the need. And I, I think that seems like an appropriate response, if, if a police escort was needed. Could you guys, instead of being on-site?
And, and just, and just so you know, in that case, at the state pit, we were not the lead agency on that. So we were, we were an assisting agency. The state patrol in that case was the primary agency because they were responsible for governor's.
Sure. And I suppose in a situation where, you know, a group of people spontaneously showed up to protest or interfere with that operation, assuming that there'd be another agency that would probably be able to take charge. I mean, are they gonna call Washington PD with two or three units available?
We had, we had all of those there at that time.
So is there extra shifts and holiday and that? That's, that's my part that I'm concerned about, is what is ICE, what is their expectation of the taxpayers, the city of Washington? What is, I mean, are we, are we subsidizing these operations? Is that right?
You're asking the wrong guy.
Well, I mean, I think, right, and I think number seven is going to be very difficult for us to have any more specificity there, right? Because I don't know, if we could list, like you said, all of the exhaustive things that are going to happen to ensure officer's safety or prevent a breach of peace, right? So that can be a lot of different things.
And, and that paragraph seven here is one that I talked to Chief Johnson quite a bit about. And not wanting to tie the hands of Washington PD officers to say, if I get called for an emergency, do I have to second guess myself for stepping in here to protect someone? That's not what was intended. The, the scope of this, and I think it's very, most supposedly, and is intended to be clear here, but paragraph seven is that primary purpose, the purpose of Washington PD will never be to assist in this, in an immigration enforcement action. Their purpose is to ensure safety and, and of the public and of the individuals involved, right? And they don't want to, to make something where they have to second guess a question, I'm going to get in trouble for responding to this.
And I, and I think by having this discussion, you know, over the past couple of meetings with the public, and then having a policy adopted eventually, that is going to help everyone know that this is the policy. This is why you may see an officer at a location where there is an enforcement taking place, but they are not participating in any enforcement action. They are only there to protect the public and the involved officers.
And I think that gets back to one of the questions from the public, what is, you know, having the police, our police there, being present, what that looks like, you know, and how that can be of the community and its, that perception. But I feel like, I guess, I'm not, I don't, I don't want to tie, I, I trust our police force to like make those decisions, and so I don't want them to think like, oh, should I not go? Should I do, should I not be present? You know, that's their job, and I, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with seven taking out the examples, because I just, it's just not my role, and I feel like that's, I really trust our police department.
So good, on that, that question of standing by or standing to keep peace, confirm also that there's a hierarchy of priorities with Washington PD officers. So if they're called to keep peace for any matter, an eviction, or, or something, if someone's coming where they might think there's a problem that's going to happen, but there's not an actual threat or an actual thing happening. If they get called with a more pressing matter that's more serious and imminent, they'll go respond to that matter. Standing by for a potential breach of the peace is not their number one priority. It's only there and available if there aren't other more pressing matters for those officers to respond to. Would you agree with that?
And me?
We have a policy on body worn cameras that officers use.
Yes, we do.
Can you freshen my question on what that might be?
No. Nick may be able to, Officer Simmons, he may be able to, but we do have a policy on them. I don't know what the specific question is.
Well, if we could add anytime that we're not, but if we are there to keep peace during immigration, uh,
Action.
Of action.
I believe that would follow the difference.
That the body worn cameras would be on and unbeaten.
It, it would be, anything, any, any type, to put it easy, any type of call where we would generate a call, like a documented call, it's all going to record in the search form.
And be.
Audio line. We don't have the ability to.
Okay, good.
Any other questions, remarks, comments, discussions? All right, well, seeing none, um, do we need to amend the motion to include the edits that we've made then? Or the one edit, I guess, two, two edits?
Yeah, so, so just so everyone's understanding here, discussion, if it was Dave and Derek who accept that proposed amendment, revising the last section of the purpose to say relating to immigration enforcement actions undertaken by any federal agency?
Agreed.
Agreed. And then paragraph seven, just removing the such as explanations there from the last part of it.
Is there a way we could include following in response to a request? Could we add response to a specific request pertaining to existing ordinance or state law specifically?
Which, where is that?
We're standing up for that.
So number seven, no city officer or employee may participate in an operation led by ICE to detain persons for deportation purposes except in response to a specific request to uphold an existing ordinance or state law. Would that clarify things?
I, I think that here, and this is one that was, that was important to Chief Johnson to do, even if they were ensuring officer's safety or preventing breach of peace, it's, you don't want to have to ask someone, hey, what ordinance are they violating? The safety, putting it in their discretion to maintain safety was something that's very important, not to tie the hands of officers here.
Sure.
To maintain that, I think.
I think as long as the intent is clear.
Yes. And I think that that is, in, in my opinion, what we try to do then.
So is a breach of the peace including anyone else's safety?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so with those two edits, you're both okay with those?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay. So seeing no further questions or discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most of you carries. Thank you all very, very much. And so with a policy like this, that is, um, that we want to be transparent about, is it something that we would post on our website?
Washington PD policies are not posted on the website.
Okay.
They are public documents, open for public request and inspection, but it's not like our ordinances that are just generally posted. Um, and specifically here, relating to this, since Washington doesn't have a police and fire commission, that's what gives council, if you're councilor mayor, the authority to enact these policies governing the regulations of Washington.
Is there anything preventing us from posting publicly?
I don't, I don't, okay, I might have, might have, but I don't know.
I didn't mean to be direct. Is there anything preventing us from posting publicly? It seems like there's been a lot of public interest.
No, there, there isn't anything preventing posting of police department policies. They, they very well may be online, accessible somewhere, I guess not in our general ordinances.
Sure.
So I, I mean, it's been part of this packet recently, which is online, but we could certainly look at, the website structure is not ideal with our current, but we can see if there's a place where it could live since it is something that we might want to access more regularly.
And so other examples of like use of deadly force policy, um, body camera policy. There, there are a lot of police department policies that are there, that govern the police department and officers' conduct that are public documents, but we just, they aren't, as far as I know, right now, in a very easily accessible part of our system.
Sure.
And that's going to be something that we discuss, and that doesn't need to be something that council needs to have done necessarily.
All right. Very good. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate that. Good discussion. Uh, moving on then, our next item is discussion and action on pay rate increase for paid on call EMT and EMRs. Uh, that stands for of your packet. I believe our director is at a meeting, I think it's in Mason, so he may have a weaver into that. So he is not here tonight, Lori is the assistant director. Uh, but we have had some meetings over the past few months, knowing that we're going to have some changes coming with our most active EMT who is retiring, and needing to address the shortage that we know we're going to have. You know, we're, we're always making strides to try to, um, get new EMTs onboard and EMRs. You know, there are some people in training right now, but it's not going to plug the hole that we're going to have. And so we're looking at other ways that we might be able to do that. And during our discussions, you know, we were made aware that Washington is on, on the low end of what we're paying our paid on call. And, um, and so we looked at, for example, Iron River, who I believe is paying eight dollars an hour, is it? Or is that only on nights and weekends? I can't remember.
Uh, I believe that was, uh, eight dollars an hour and then a hundred dollars per call.
And so they're, they actually are turning people away from being on call because, you know, people are like, oh, I could actually make a living, you know, having a, a minimum wage job for being on call. You know, obviously, our restriction is budget. You know, I don't know that we have the ability to meet this request head-on, although, you know, we are currently at three dollars an hour. We did budget some money in 2026, knowing that this was something that we were looking at. So, I would, you know, I, I really do wish our director could be here to kind of help lead this discussion, but, and I don't know that we need to necessarily make a decision on this tonight. This is something that I think we could have council recommend that they go to personnel and finance for further discussion and actually looking at numbers of what looks like it could work within our budget. And then personnel finance could make a recommendation back to council. I think that would probably make the most sense at this point, since we don't have all of the detail. Or anyone to lead the discussion who's heavily involved in the detail?
Has it gone to personnel?
No, it hasn't.
So we don't know the.
It was a request just to come to council's shirts. Because I think the goal is, we need to, we need to figure this out as quickly as possible.
Discussion was started with Ten and Randy, but then Randy left and they're. Discussion was started with Ten and Randy, but then Randy left and there was no carryover into the current budget that you'll be approving. So there, there was a gap that made a connection.
So we kind of went ahead with the budget process, knowing something needed to be done vaguely, but, you know, we were having to.
But not to what extent that it increases. Yes, it one has been discussed, being needed or being talked about, but it just never came to fruition with the actual.
With numbers, yeah. So this is the first attempt at putting numbers down for what is being requested.
And because the tax levy has already passed, we cannot change the dollar amount that's coming in.
So we're working within the money that we are approving.
Well, I'll make the motion to send this to personnel and finance with their recommendation. Second.
Okay, motion by Jared, it was a second by Ten. Any questions, comments or discussion on that motion?
I mean, my discussion comments would be that we know we have to do something, right? And so, uh, an increase is something we've been talking about for quite some time. It's, I think, so I guess trying to work with our acting, is that right? Our helping, I don't even know how to call them, sorry. Acting City Administrator Budget Guru, um, trying to figure out what we could, where we can.
Contractor.
Contractor, sorry, he's a contractor, to try to figure it out, right? I mean, the numbers here, the eight dollars per hour, I, I just don't have any reference to look at. It's like, yeah, but you know, so I just would like to see, I mean, I hear that we're low, but it's, I don't, we don't, we shouldn't be low.
Right, right.
So like to see some comparison and have a couple proposals.
And, and I'd say it's just not the fact, everybody's probably heard this before, but it's not just the fact that we're low. The fact of the matter is, is we're losing two key people.
Correct.
And what that does is makes us rely on Ashland, which in turn costs us.
Costs us money anyways.
Costs us more money.
More money, so we, so we should just pay our people better.
Right.
Yeah, as a preventative measure. As a preventative measure, they all, you know, part, part of me just says, let's just approve as a proposal. But I'm okay with.
One more step.
One more step in the process to make sure we have the money, right? So, um, yeah, appreciate all the work that those guys have done to do so. It's like, let's do something, so for sure.
Yeah, ab- absolutely. Sounds good. Uh, any other comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of sending this to personnel and finance?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh, next item, discussion in action on final 2026 budget adjustments and resolution number 25 dash zero zero six, adopting all 2026 budgets and expenditures. This is ten, five of your packets.
And Scott is online.
All right. Mr. Rasmussen.
There was a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second, motion by Jared, second by Jared. Scott?
Yes.
Can you, uh, can you help us with, uh, what this means for our tax bills?
Uh, certainly, yes, your, your resident budget contractor here.
Sorry, Scott. I'm the guru, by the way.
Yes, I'll be guru, I'd like that too, thank you. You give me too much credit. Uh, this, so basically what, uh, just start with the resolution first. Resolution is nothing more than just the final consideration of budget. Obviously, it's collapsing, you pass the tax levy, which drives all of these numbers. So, and there hasn't been any changes in between. So, um, uh, so that's the gist of the resolution you're doing tonight. But I don't believe that the tax bills have gone off quite yet. Uh, I know we, Tammy and I worked with, uh, folks at the county to, uh, get the, obviously the proper numbers in last week. I, I know that's poorly to have to be up on the 10th, I believe, so you should be seeing them pretty soon. But I, I did want to, uh, to kind of go over it. I think Tony, Tony has passed out, uh, the tax bill comparison sheet.
Oh, he's going to pass it out, right?
Oh, he's going to out it. I'll, I'll, while you do that, um, I, I, maybe I can address something you talked about just a bit ago regarding the budget. Um, we did increase those on call, the on call pay for, uh, your EMS staff. Um, there's about 25,000, well, it's going to come in to be about 25,000 dollars more um, that it had last year's budget or what they would eat, what they required for 2025. Um, so I think that's a good start, but, uh, but certainly there's more work to be done.
That's, I think, that's positive.
So, so we know that we don't have that money to work with, right?
Right, so we know we have that money.
Correct.
So that's what that looks like for an hourly wage, the details we need to work on.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you. Okay, we are, we now have our handouts.
Okay. Um, the reason I wanted to pass this, a couple, a couple of reasons really. One, you know, I certainly think that the, that the city council lead office officials should, uh, have an idea of this before maybe you get questions from your constituents on, on what the tax bill is going to look like. Uh, and then secondarily, uh, you know, to be honest, you've had a couple of years of, we'll call it a little bit of a tax oddness regarding that tip district issue and, uh, and some other pieces. So, um, so basically what this is showing is for residential assessed valuable of one, 200,000, well, of 200,000 dollars. Um, I, I honestly don't know, Tammy and I talked a bit, if that is, is your average. I'm gonna guess it's pretty close. Uh, but it's a good round number and kind of a place to start to, for, for any sort of comparison pieces. So 2023 was really, I'm gonna say your last kind of, uh, standard year. That 2023 included tip two was still on the book on the taxes, tip three was properly on the taxes. Uh, and so, and that's the comparison as we move forward. 2024 was odd for a couple of reasons, primarily from the city standpoint. Uh, the fact that, uh, there was some confusion between your assessor and Department of Revenue regarding, uh, after tip two came off the books and what property, where there was some overlapping property in the, in the tips. And ultimately, um, the, the value of tip three was reduced so that there was no increment, which meant that there was no taxes for tip three in 2024. And yet we talked about that and, um, again, simple error that got rectified this year. But if you look at, you know, we'll just start right at the top of the city of Washburn's taxes. You know, so the, the tax bill for this 200,000 on our home actually went down five and a, five and a half percent from 2023. I assure you that was no magic that I did last year. Uh, it was too old, one, because tip two came off the books and went back on the general taxes, which made things look better. And then secondarily, because there was no tip three taxes, um, the overall city tax levy was, was lower significantly than it was in 2023. Um, you know, it, the big change obviously in 2024, which I'm sure that, uh, that Tammy heard a lot about when they were paying the tax bills, was the increase in the school taxes due primarily to the referent. But again, that was a, you know, almost a 50% increase. Had the tip been handled properly in 2024, that would have been probably more like a 60% increase. So, you know, maybe a, 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 and then back that tip two went off the books, that helped them a lot as well. So 2024 was a little bit of a reduction on city side entities than the other entities, school notwithstanding. Moving forward to this year then. Um, so what the Department of Revenue allowed the city to do was basically have a one year adjustment to make up that lost tax revenue from tip three from last year. So that is included in the 2025 taxes. Again, re- recall that, uh, your city levy went up about, is about 3% um, from the allowable tax levy, um, limit increase, uh, that we had from new construction and some other pieces. And again, we, we bumped that, you approved it to the highest point that we could, could raise that roughly that 3%. Um, to continue to, you know, the base moving forward. And the fact that, you know, frankly, the 3% barely covers, um, you, your staff increases, uh, uh, in state hall. But so because of that, that one time adjustment, your 2025 taxes are just a little artificially higher than they would have been. And so at the end of the day, the city's piece was six, you know, about 6% increase, including the tip. And you can look at the other ones down the line. Um, the counties was higher, uh, my, from what I saw on, on their budget, looked like maybe they borrowed some money for highway projects. Uh, so that was a, you know, pretty good size increase as well. But at the end of the day, the total tax bill that's 200,000 on our home is going to go up 12%. I would add that the fact that the, the dollar credit and the gaming credits, lottery gaming credit went down a good 40 dollars from last year too, so that's, that did help things. Um, what I'm attempting to do in that bottom piece is just kind of look and see, well, what, what would the, uh, tax bill look like had we not had a tip adjustment? Had 2025 been a standard tip year, not kind of the doubling up to cover last year's? And as you can see down the line, the, the total savings would have been about $71 versus what they're this year. And every entity's percentage, um, would have been reduced by between 1.7 and 2%. So things would have looked a lot better had we not had that adjustment. But again, things were artificially lower last year. And as we move forward for next year, obviously that one time adjustment, which was almost $4 million, goes away and then things get quote, 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 kind of back to normal. So I guess that's, uh, again, it's, it's, I, I, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, nobody wants to see their tax bills go up $400, but, um, here's an explanation of why, I guess. And, uh, and again, I hope Tammy and, and Tony, uh, find this helpful when folks come in because, you know, to be honest, as we talked about earlier, people typically don't look at where increases are. They just care about my tax bill went way out.
Overall, overall, right?
Yeah, overall, so this, this adds at least an explanation. And Tammy can certainly, uh, you know, make copies to show folks, you know, this information is technically on your tax bill and you're not at all in one good spot, but, uh, but again, sometimes folks don't read anything but the bottom line and, um, so again, hopefully this helps a little bit explain why it was up a little more than it normally should have been.
Sure, and even with that, I mean, it's the lowest of all of the different taxing entities.
Right, yes, uh.
As far as percentage goes.
Right, right. Yeah, the school, school lists are catching up a little bit, but.
So that, um, that is helpful, but it's a complicated thing to communicate. So thank you for, um, taking the time to lay this out and walk us through it. That's very helpful.
Thank you, and again, I hope you find it helpful and useful and, uh, my pleasure.
Absolutely. All right, so we do have a motion to adopt all the budgets and expenditures. Uh, so that would be, uh, for the resolution doing so. Uh, are there any other questions, comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, we have a budget. How do we, uh, thank you again, Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's been a pleasure working with you and I look forward to your continued presence as we, uh, oh, that was my other announcement that I was going to make. As we continue forward with our, uh, organizational assessment that we voted on in the last meeting, uh, which we did have a kickoff meeting this morning for that, so we're, we're going to get going on that process and Mr. Rasmussen will be a part of that as well, so.
Can we just book him for next year?
I did that, I did that already.
I'm waiting for Derek to say something.
I, I, I already did.
I think his, his wife would maybe have something to say about that. Yeah, so to see, cause he's actually retired.
Really?
All right, very good.
We'll talk, yeah. Thank you, thank you, yeah.
All right, take care. Um, next item is discussion in action, writing off certain outstanding bills. That's in ten, six of your packets. Is this something that we inevitably have to do? At the end of the year, for, for various reasons.
I'll make the motion to approve right now. $1,356, $186.
There's actually two of those there.
Or two, all, all amounts. And the $118 for workforce, no way.
Three, three dollar amounts.
Three dollar amounts.
Twelve dollar amounts.
As outlined.
As outlined.
I second.
Okay, motion by Jared, second by Jen. Any questions?
Well, the unfunded general fund checks is the one.
Yes, that, isn't that interesting?
Yeah, we normally don't have that.
Unpassed checks?
Well, yeah.
In the general fund?
I mean, she believes they were cashed, but not taken out of her account through the sub- layer of the bank.
Yeah, that's true.
And that would, it's just, we just, I mean, we do this all the time with the other, you know, that. I've lost once, but never had this happen before, but it's not like it's, um, it's almost $3,000, so.
It's quite a.
Yeah, it would be different if it was $200 bucks or something, but anyway, quite a bit.
And it's from 2022?
2023, yep.
And 2023? Um, so I just, yeah, the name isn't going to catch on anywhere. I, I don't know if we do follow-ups, it looks like it's for, for the National Private Department.
It's private, it's true.
Yeah, it's.
It's private, we always have private ones, yeah, but I don't know, but they're making.
I don't know, I hope, let's.
It, it may come back to haunt us, I don't know.
I don't know either.
I don't know what I would deal with at that point, but.
For the skating.
For now, we need to write a job.
And the park skating, all that's going to be. Anyway, okay.
Um, any other questions, comments? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is discussion in action on 2026 meeting election and holiday calendar. What can happen next year at this time? And it looks like there's really only, uh, a couple of exceptions toward what would be a normal schedule. Um, one note is just that city hall needs to be open until 5:00 PM on that half day when we take, uh, on Good Friday, on that day. So staff just makes up for that on a different date, because that's before the election, correct? So we need to be here for that.
Both, and both of the changes are election.
And then, yeah, and then the one in August is just a totally different date for the power council meeting because of the election in August, the primary. Which we sometimes have to move that one anyway because of the fair, but this, this year, it's for the election. All right, um, what I do here to make a motion?
Motion to accept it.
Motion by Jared, second by Ten, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are going to move into a closed session for the next item, if someone would care to make a motion to do so. So I did one of closed sessions, second by Jared, all in favor?
All right, nice.
And one more.
You need to.
Hold, 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 sorry.
You're going to leave. But. Jared Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Eric Serine?
Sir.
Yes.
Jenna Zaius?
Yes.
Doug Amet?
Yes.
Dave Anderson?
Yes.
Don Benson? Yes, I didn't hear that. Terry Trumbo?
Yes.
Okay. They're going into closed session at 6:40. Eric, you have, you're on here twice on the Zoom?
Yeah, I got, bring two pieces, two pieces of, uh, yeah. Making that work here, so.
We saw people meeting, so.
Yeah, that'll be just a minute.
Oh, I need to turn this off.